Meaning, uh, March eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four to order at seven P M. Uh, my first item is review of the school climate survey.
Okay, uh, as, uh, as everyone knows, um, we did a survey this past January, using, um, a survey that was designed and developed from Panorama, uh, was approved by the board in the fall and we implemented in January. Katie Avery has taken all of the data from the surveys that we, generated from, uh, students, parents and, uh, teachers. And she's going to go over the results of that survey and then more or less review the next steps for the district. So Katie, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. Uh, good evening, members of the board, superintendent, community members. It is a pleasure and a privilege to be here with you all this evening. Um, again, my name is Katie Avery. I'm a professional learning director and strategic advisor for Panorama Education. I've been with the company just about two years now and have a background in education. I worked at the state level and was a school leader and classroom educator before that. So really excited to wear a number of those hats as we review some of your data today. Um, first and foremost, I want to let you know that we do have a very robust presentation for you this evening. So I'm gonna put into the chat a link where if you have ongoing questions, um, or, um, any considerations that you have about the survey data that's presented this evening, please feel free to use that link. It'll just ask for some quick, um, contact information and then has an open space for you to share any questions or reflections that you might have. Um, and I'll be meeting again with the district team after our conversation this evening to make sure we can respond to any of those additional inquiries. So, um, that link is open to members of the public, to board members, to, um, school staff and district staff as well. So please feel free to use that throughout our conversation today. And without further ado, I am going to share my screen. Make sure I have everything up here and accurate. I don't think you can see it yet. Let's see. All right, superintendent, I can still see your face. Can you see my screen? Okay. Great, thank you. So again, this is, um, an initial overview of our, uh, survey data from this school year across the district. And what we'll share in this presentation is a little background of Panorama for those that aren't familiar. And then we're gonna jump right into your, um, teacher, staff, family and student survey response data. So for those who are just meeting Panorama as a partner for the first time, um, we are a national company. Uh, we are founded on a very simple belief that every student matters. And so we work in partnership with districts like yours to make sure that we can provide the data, the insight, and then of course, the aligned resources and strategies to support success for all students. We've been doing this work for over a decade and we partner with schools across all fifty states, including the District of Columbia. And I think one of the most important things to keep in mind here is we will be sharing some comparison data with you this evening. That comparison data set is over fifteen million students, about one in four, one in five students around the country who engage with Panorama surveys throughout the school year. And so we have a pretty broad national data set. Um, and I'll go into some detail and framing when we talk about comparative data moving forward. Our time together this evening is I will share a little bit about survey engagement. So the timeline for survey administration, who participated in the survey? And then actually, we've, um, swapped the order here. We're gonna look at teacher, staff, survey results. I'll do a topic overview, talk specifically about relationships and future plans for educators and staff. Then we'll look at our family survey results and we'll close out with the reason why we're all here, our students. So a little bit detail, the information about our survey overview. So we created the project in January tenth. The survey was launched on the nineteenth and it was open for just shy of a month. And so educators, family members and students had a long, uh, opportunity, nearly a month to complete the survey. And then communication was led by the district and school leaders as well. I should say that I'm using the word educator synonymously. When I use that word, it means school staff, instructional staff, teachers, administrators, et cetera. There were three types of surveys that we partnered with Thompson Schools to execute. We did a school level student survey. The data that you'll see reflected here is for students in grades three through twelve. We grouped three through five as elementary and then six through twelve as secondary. And then I also did some additional data analysis to parse out some of the trends that we saw between middle and high school. We had staff and teacher survey, so those were two distinct groups of survey participants. And you'll see that there are some topics that were specific to just the teacher survey. So just those who are leading instruction in the classroom had some teacher-specific topics. And then we had our family-school relationship survey. A note about the data that you're gonna see this evening and just to keep this in mind, for context, as you look at some of the trends and some of the highlights that we have to present for you, is that Thompson Schools chose to implement the tool in its entirety. And so that's to say, we have a suite of topics for each one of these three stakeholder groups. Oftentimes, districts might choose between three and five topics to survey based on what's in their strategic plan or the kind of feedback they're soliciting from their stakeholders. In this sort of first instance, what we really did in partnership with Thompson was create sort of a baseline of data and feedback using all of the topics that are available. So as we go through the stakeholder groups, I'll make some comments and additional framing around, um, where there are and are not comparison data sets. For example, some topics that have somewhat phased out from some of our partners, schools and districts. But that's something I'd like you to keep in mind, that the surveys were quite long because they included all of the topics available for each stakeholder group. As far as participation, we had five hundred thirty-four students. Again, that's representing grades three through twelve and you'll see the grade level breakdown there. So from the elementary school, we had one hundred twenty-three students participate. From the middle, we saw two hundred twenty-seven. And then from the high, we saw one hundred eighty-four students participate. For staff and teachers, we had a total of one hundred nineteen. That included teams, central office staff, and then you'll see here the breakdown by campus. So we had forty-six teachers and staff members at Mary R. Fisher, thirty-two at Thompson and twenty-nine. For families, we had three hundred twelve. I think in our debrief, um, and analysis of the data, we said that this was about a third of families, um, across the district and you'll see the representation there as well. We had the majority of respondents, um, from our elementary school. We had then the next highest, eighty-one respondents from middle and forty-nine respondents, family respondents from the high school. And I would say just as framing that that's fairly consistent with what we see, um, with our partners that execute family surveys across the country, is that we, we see fewer respondents in the older grades because we know family engagement looks a little bit different at that time in a student's life. I'm gonna offer a little bit of information about the science behind our surveys and then I will pause for any pertinent questions. Um, and I will repeat the link to our Q and A form in the chat as well. Um, all of these are hyperlinks and I'll be sure to share this, um, the list of links with everyone after we close today. This essentially outlines the process through which, uh, Panorama's research team, engineering team and design team, create the surveys that you all have implemented across the district. And so you'll see there's a very intense development step-by-step process. There's additional information at this link if you're curious about the science behind how those things are created. And then really what we get most questions about are, is this valid? Can I rely on the information that's provided to me from my stakeholder groups in these surveys? Most recently, Panorama conducted a research, um, uh, study in two thousand twenty. You'll see here over three and a half million student survey takers. There's an additional link here to learn more about that research study. But essentially, the takeaway from this project was that yes, this is a valid tool and it is a reliable tool. So yes, the research does show what it claims to show. And when we see different folks responding differently, we can attribute that to them having different experiences in school. So again, there's a link there if anybody has follow-up questions or is just curious about the survey design validity and reliability components. We're providing that information for you upfront. Um, I'm gonna repeat again this link in the chat for those who may want to add any questions at this time, but certainly want to open it up to, um, your chair or superintendent if there are any questions in the room that I'm not seeing at this time about participation and engagement. All right, seeing none, we're gonna get into the details, why we are all here. So first, we're going to review our results from the teacher and staff survey. This breakdown will show you that we had forty-one out of sixty-two possible staff members respond to the survey. And then there were two background questions that the district asked of these staff members. The first was for how many years do you plan to continue working in this district? And the second is for how many years do you want to stay in your current profession? These tables are a little small, so I'm gonna try to make this a little bit larger for us here. If I can, there we go. Um, and so you see the breakdown here, we saw the majority of respondents of staff said that they plan to continue working in the district for eleven or more years, followed by six to ten and then three to five. And then for how many years do you want to stay in your current profession? Again, the majority of respondents were there in the eleven or more years. So a great desire to stay with the district, to stay in their current roles and to continue serving their school communities in their current capacity. For teachers, we saw a similar trend there around, um, length of service and desire to stay in the district. We had seventy-six out of a possible one hundred seven teachers respond to the survey. And you'll see the breakdown for those two same questions here across the teacher group. Some initial, um, analysis from the teacher survey. And we say preliminary because again, you have a tremendous amount of data available to you based on the quantity of topics that you surveyed. So I'm going to voice over some of the texts that you see on the screen here for accessibility. And then of course, you'll have access to this information after our conversation today. So the first thing we noticed was that educators, the teachers specifically, across all campuses, reported the highest and most consistent favorability in the topic of educating all students. And so this is a topic that asks about teachers' ability to differentiate, their ability to provide an excellent educational opportunity to all students, um, across all subgroups. The favorability for this topic was between eighty-one and eighty-two percent across all campuses. And so when we talk about favorability on Panorama surveys, you can think about a traditional feedback survey where you have sort of your agree and strongly agree response options. That's essentially what favorability means, although our response options are worded to match the phrasing of the question. And so the language is gonna be a little different, but it's typically the two, sometimes three highest, um, response options roll up into that favorability average. The highest favorability across campuses, so at our elementary school, we saw the highest topic was teaching efficacy at seventy-nine percent. This is all, of course, just under educating all students, which was the most favorable topic at all campuses. So in the elementary school, teaching efficacy is at seventy-nine percent favorable. At the middle school, staff leadership relationships were at eighty-six percent favorable. So that's relationship between staff and their leaders. And then at the high school, teaching efficacy, like we saw at elementary, was at eighty-two percent favorable. So I'm really strong favorability across these topics at campuses. The lowest favorability across those same campuses were at our elementary school, feedback and coaching at twenty-one percent was an area of opportunity. At the middle school, testing at eighteen percent favorability. And at the high school, evaluation at nineteen percent favorability. And so I just want to draw a distinction here that when we're talking about testing, we're talking about the testing of students and we're talking about evaluation, it's the evaluation of adults. And then finally, the greatest topic variance, so the widest range in favorability that we noticed was in the topic of family-school relationships, where we saw seventy-six percent favorable results at the elementary and thirty-six percent favorable at the high school. And then the middle was right in the middle there. Again, this is, um, aligned to what we often see in trends around family engagement is that it looks different in the secondary grades than at the elementary grades. Continuing with our adult survey analysis, this is staff, so this is non-instructional staff in the buildings. Across all campus, campuses reported greater variance across topics than teachers. And so there was some variety of responses. Um, it was, there were fewer apparent trends amongst staff responses than we were able to notice in teacher responses. Across all campuses, the highest, uh, favorable areas were learning recovery at the elementary school, staff leadership relationships at the middle school at seventy-eight percent favorable and also at the high school at sixty-four percent favorable. And then the lowest favorability across campuses was the area of feedback and coaching at the elementary school and at the middle school at sixteen and thirty-five percent favorable respectively, and evaluation at the high school at nineteen percent favorability. So I'm gonna pause there for any questions about the trends. That was a lot of data and there's even more to explore as we get into the platform. But want to take an opportunity to receive any questions that might be coming up for the board at this time. All right, that's my best teacher wait time. I taught kindergarten, so you never had to wait very long for those young ones to jump into the conversation. So for our topic overview, what you'll see here are staff and teacher results by topic, side by side. So we can see the distinction between how staff are experiencing the work environment and how teachers are experiencing. So the first topic you see here that was noted in the previous slide is evaluation. And this is district-wide now, so this is coming out of that campus-specific lens and looking district-wide. At the staff, favorability was right around thirty-four percent and teachers at twenty-nine percent. These blue bars represent favorability and you'll see then in some of the topics that we have also a national percentile scoring. You won't see it in topics like learning recovery, for example. That's a topic that's majorly been phased out from a lot of our partner districts because a lot of these questions have to do with sort of post-COVID, COVID learning recovery strategies and re-entry into school. And so that's why you won't see a comparison data set there. So we're seeing, um, up to the twentieth percentile for the topics of evaluation and then feedback and coaching. And we're seeing in both of these areas that staff had a slightly more favorable response than teachers. We're seeing that sort of flipped here on the next screen where we're seeing teachers had a slightly more favorable response in the areas of professional learning and readiness for learning. And then resources, we flip back to staff had a slightly more favorable than teacher response. This readiness for learning is another indicator where you won't see that national percentile ranking, but we're seeing some strong favorability from teachers in that topic area. Really limited variance in the area of professional learning, which indicates that opportunities for professional growth are received equally by our teachers and staff across the district. And I believe this is our last topic overview for both, where we see teacher and staff reflections around school climate. And I'm gonna share in just a little bit what that means. So for all of these topics, there are anywhere between four and sometimes eight questions that roll up into this average favorability for the topic. So we'll talk in just a little bit about what that means when we're talking about school climate. For school leadership, we're seeing teachers at fifty-two percent favorable, staff at forty-three percent favorable. And then staff-family relationships, teachers are slightly higher than staff at fifty-three and forty-seven percent favorable respectively. I mentioned earlier that there are some topics that were specific just to the teacher cohort. So these did not get, um, these questions were not asked of staff across campuses. But this is educating all students, a faculty growth mindset, the topic of grit, student mindset. So that's a child's growth mindset about their learning and then teaching efficacy. And we saw the greatest strengths in educating all students and teaching efficacy, which are really topics focused on practice and pedagogy. Lot of text again on this slide. So this is one topic that we honed in on as, um, receiving some favorable responses across teachers. So we saw seventy-two percent favorability overall, which puts us right around that fiftieth percentile nationally for staff leadership relationships. And I just want to voice this over for accessibility. That while teachers responded more favorably than staff regarding leadership relationships, there was great variance across individual questions within this topic. So I have another slide that will show that. In addition, there were some variance across respondent groups with respect to how long they intend to stay in education and their favorability, forget that typo, regarding individual questions. Overall, teachers who reported wanting to stay in the profession and the district for three to five years responded least favorably regarding staff leadership relationships. But there were not other discernible trends in this regard. So that's to say that, that background questions that we asked of educators, that was really sort of the standalone trend that we saw. So breaking this down even further, and again, I know this type is small, so I'll read aloud some of this distinction. On the previous slide where we noted that there was great variance across questions within this particular topic, we're talking about the difference between ninety-two percent favorable and fifty-one percent favorable across these individual question stems. So for example, the most favorable responses were in response to when challenges arise in your personal life, how understanding are your school leaders? And from teachers, that question got a ninety-two percent favorability, oh, excuse me, across the district. And so that's a really beautiful opportunity for celebration and thinking about the leaders in the buildings and how responsive they are to educators when there's something happening in their personal life. Similarly, the next favorable response was how respectful are your school leaders towards you? And teachers across the district said at eighty-seven percent favorability, they felt like their leaders were respectful to teachers in the building. Then we see a variety of questions completing the rest of this topic, the least favorable of which was at your school, how motivating do you find working with the leadership team? And so there's something to get curious about between the difference or the distinction between those two questions. But what we wanted to offer here was a breakdown of that answer distribution. And so this level of data is available for every single question within the survey where you can see that we still have almost a quarter of our teaching staff who are saying that leaders are somewhat motivating. And so that'll give you an idea of sort of the ways in which folks are responding differently to different questions when you look at that answer distribution. And then here, again, we saw that variance across, but there were really no discernible trends between years, aspirations of yours for staying in the district compared to all the other questions within this topic. This next slide shows similar data, but in response to the staff, uh, stakeholder group. So their most favorable response in this question was how friendly are your school leaders towards you? And we saw limited variance across the breakdown of how many years they'd plan to continue in the district. And the least favorable response was at your school, how motivating do you find working with the leadership team? So same question received, uh, the least favorable for both of those stakeholder groups. Slightly lower for staff than for teachers, but we see nearly half of our staff, eighteen staff members, still reporting in that somewhat motivating. So sort of right on that cusp there of favorability for this particular question. Finally, we wanted to share some of the data around how many years folks wanted to stay in the profession compared to how many years folks wanted to continue in the district. So staying in the profession is the light blue. We had the majority of folks saying they'd like to stay in the profession for over eleven years. We also saw the majority of respondents saying they'd like to stay in this district for over eleven years, just over thirty-five percent. And the next group was right there in the three-to-five-year range. And we will pause again for questions. And we're going next to families. So any questions about teachers or staff, this is the opportunity. Okay, I'm gonna pull out this survey link just to make sure I'm not missing anything coming in on our link. Okay. All right, our family survey responses. Again, we had about three hundred twelve families respond to the survey. So keeping in mind that small sample size as we comb through some of this data. And then our topic overview has some additional definition for each of these areas so that you can put that, um, into consideration as we look at the areas of favorability here. So one of the strongest areas in the family survey was this notion of family support, which is family's perception of the amount of academic and social support they provide their child with outside of school. We had a seventy percent favorability from our family respondents there, which is right around the thirtieth percentile nationally and still a strong local favorability. Similarly, family efficacy, which is how confident families feel in being able to support key parenting skills. So things like monitoring students' progress in school and helping them persist with difficult or challenging topics was about thirty-sixty-three percent favorability. We talked a little bit about this in our initial analysis conversations. And I just want to highlight here that this topic of family engagement, you'll see that this is actually the highest, uh, for Thompson Schools is the highest national percentile, where you're right around the fiftieth percentile, but the lowest favorability at eighteen percent. And I just want to add, uh, sort of disclaimer here that the questions within this topic of family engagement are very much frequency-based. And so there are questions about how often the family is coming to school? How many times per school year are you engaging in a school-based event? Or how often are you talking with other families outside of school? And that this eighteen percent represents our third through twelfth grade families. So again, keeping in mind that when our engagement on campus looks different, especially post-COVID for a lot of districts than otherwise. And this is also rolling up those secondary responses where we start to see oftentimes lower attendance at parent-teacher conferences or different ways in which families are engaging in their child's educational journey that might not necessarily be captured in the questions under this topic. So I know folks often see a family survey and they see this topic of family engagement. Um, so I just wanted to offer that additional context and detail for that component. And then the last three topics we asked our family about was school climate. So again, school climate's one you'll see across all three surveys. You get that nice three sixty view of how different stakeholders are experiencing school climate, school fit and then school safety. There's also an opportunity within the Panorama platform to look at your data through this sort of disaggregated group lens. So we did not collect demographic information from teachers and families. We did collect demographic information from families on the survey. Things like grade, things like race and ethnicity, things like family income. And so here, we're gonna dive into some of those specifics and what we saw as some trends. The heat map that you see here is showing from pre-kindergarten all the way to twelfth grade. So for pre-K families through second grade, families responded, even though those students didn't respond to the student survey. So we have data from across all grade bands. The next column shows you the number of respondents. And so we saw the most respondents from our fourth grade cohort, followed by third grade. We saw the fewest respondents actually in pre-K, followed by ninth and then twelfth grade. And then what you see here across the top in the dark gray are those district-wide averages. So we previously saw that family engagement was eighteen percent district-wide favorability, but that our second grade cohort, our seventh, eighth and ninth grade cohort are reporting higher favorability actually in that topic area compared to tenth grade, where you see this dark orange is lower favorability than the average. And so essentially, what this heat map is showing, where there's dark green, that's gonna be a higher variance from the district-wide average. Where there's dark orange, there's gonna be a lower variance from the district-wide average. So what does that mean across all of these beautiful topics? Um, I will voice over what we have here in the narrative for you. Some of the strongest examples of variance, so where we saw the most difference in favorability across grade levels, were noted in twelfth grade for grit and learning behaviors and pre-K for school fit and learning behaviors, where families reported over twenty percentage points higher than the district-wide average for these topics. Overall, the largest variance that we noted was in the topic of school climate with a sixty-seven percentage point difference between pre-K and eleventh grade families. So that's this third to last column here where, uh, district-wide, excuse me, there was a forty-nine percent favorability for school climate. Pre-K families are reporting an eighty-nine percent favorability. Kindergarten is reporting a, uh, quick mental math, seventy-one percent favorability. But then the comparison between those younger grades and for example, eleventh grade families are reporting a twenty-two percent favorability. And so that's where we saw really the greatest difference between any respondent group across grade levels was in that topic of school climate. Another opportunity to look at the disaggregated data is, um, families, race and ethnicity. And so you'll see again, those district-wide averages in the top and then any variance across, same way to read this heat map, over and under the average. I wanted to also share this slide to note that oftentimes, when a subgroup is smaller than ten, so it's curious to me that we're having the seven populate, it will be confidentiality protected. And so for example, if you were looking at this data for a specific campus and you had just one family who matched a particular demographic, their response would be rolled up into the next smallest respondent group to protect the confidentiality of that respondent. And so we have some additional data here in other and confidentiality protected. That's hard to really analyze because we've masked some of that data, again, to respect the families that have responded to the survey. That's hard to really analyze because we've masked some of that data again to respect the families that have responded to the survey. Another piece of information that we noticed when we were looking at different family groups and their responses was with respect to family education and family income. And so before I narrate the trends that we found here, I just want to offer some additional context. When it comes to family education, it's whomever is completing the survey, right? And so it could be, you know, whichever family member has chosen to take the survey for that particular household, that's the level of education that you'll see reflected here. And then again, the group size in the second column. And then for average household income, that's for their household income, but does not take into account, for example, how many children are in the home. So when we look at household income, I just want to be careful not to conflate it, for example, with eligibility for free and reduced price lunch, because that eligibility determine is determined by how many people are in your family compared to what the income is. Right? And so just want to make sure that that framing is clear when we look at some of these trends. We did notice that families with a college education and/or some graduate school reported the most favorable experiences compared to those who had a high school degree or three years of college specifically, who reported some of the least favorable responses. There was also variance in favorability across family socioeconomic status. So we saw that those who were making less than essentially fifty thousand dollars a year reported some of the least favorable responses compared to those families who made between one hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars reporting the most favorable responses. And so that's where you see these dark orange and darker green trends showing up in this heat map. Overall, the greatest variance was noted in the topic of grit. And this is actually a topic that we at Panorama have gotten a lot of feedback around, one just with respect to the title, but also how different folks are interpreting those questions differently. So that's one to dive into if you're curious, the specific question level data that's available in the platform. I want to pause here. Apologies that our bitly is not coming up, so I'll put it again in the chat for any questions that might be coming up about the family survey data.
I don't necessarily, Katie, have a question, but just a comment under the family responses when they were talking about support. And the the issue is, you know, three hundred and twelve families took this survey. And so the level of support obviously from most families is there, right? Because they they're engaged, they they took the survey, but we're still missing about six hundred other families that haven't responded. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a comment.
Yeah, I think that's a really important piece of context to keep in mind. And as your partners in this work, we can support with increasing response rates moving forward and share some strategies and best practices from other districts who've been implementing the family survey for some time.
Yeah, that's a good idea. Thank you.
Other questions or reflections? And I paused my sharing so I can make sure I'm not missing any hands. We will jump back in. So last but certainly not least, our student survey. And just wanted to offer, oops, I'm not sharing my screen. I apologize. There we go. Just wanted to offer another reminder here about the survey experience of our students. Because of the quantity of topics, the survey was quite lengthy for students to take. And so while we know that the tool is valid and we know that the tool is reliable, we also want to take into consideration the realistic experience that our kiddos likely had, especially those younger ones. And maybe even I have a couple teenagers myself. I know how they can feel about long survey questions, just keeping that in mind as we review some of the student survey data that's available to us here. So for our elementary students, again, elementary is representing our third through fifth graders. We saw our strongest favorability in the topics of learning, recovery, and readiness for learning and school belonging. School belonging was one of the strongest national comparison data points for elementary students that the district had overall, coupled with school learning strategies, which is how well students deliberately use strategies to manage their own learning process generally. So this is a really powerful indicator of student agency and engagement in the classroom and puts you right around the ninetieth percentile nationally in that particular topic. We also saw the highest favorability here around school rigorous expectations and school teacher-student relationships, which is always a celebration when we see this as a strong favorability and we see a strong national percentile comparison for this, saying that students are indicating that the social connection between teachers and students within and beyond the school is positive and is strong for them. So for our third through fifth graders, lots to celebrate here. And we see some other really high percentiles nationally and strong favorability across topics like school mindset, school safety, and valuing of school. For our secondary students, now this is coupling our middle and our high school. So this is six through twelve altogether. We saw some of the strongest favorability again in those areas of learning, recovery, and readiness for learning, followed by grit. And there are some additional ones on the next screen. And so want to offer that for all of these topics, we're seeing lower national percentiles. But this national percentile comparison is taking your middle and high school students and comparing to the entirety of that fifteen million data set. So it's all other schools and districts, including elementary, that are rolled up into this comparative data set here. So just want to add that for context. And as we dive into the platform, if we were to do deeper analysis with your district leadership or with school leaders, we could do a little bit more of an apples-to-apples comparison and look at other non-urban high schools with a sort of moderate free and reduced price lunch population. And that'll give us a little bit more of a like comparison than this broad national data set. Here we see again a strength in school rigorous expectations. And so this is how much students feel that their teachers hold them to high expectations regarding effort, understanding, persistence, and performance. So this is really the execution of those mindsets and competencies that students need to be successful. Sixty percent favorability, which we would consider strong at a local level. And again, we're taking into consideration those other contextual pieces when we look at the national percentile. We saw valuing of school and school mindset as some of the lower favorability here for our secondary students. And again, there's a great deal of detail and information around what those specific questions were that we were asking our students. So because that coupled our middle and high together, we wanted to parse out some data for those campuses, specifically looking at some of the glows. And so for school rigorous rigorous expectations, which we saw as a strength across of our student subset, well, in the fortieth percentile nationally, your middle school students responded most favorably to this topic at seventy-one percent than their district peers. And in particular, they responded most favorably at seventy-six percent to the question, when you feel like giving up on a difficult task, how likely is it that your teachers will make you keep trying? So that there's some real strength in this practice of persistence and of growth mindset. And again, sort of reinforcing what a strong favorability you had to student-teacher relationships that teachers believe in students and they're encouraging them to continue working hard. In the topic of school mindset, we saw this was the strongest national comparison for your middle schoolers nearing the fiftieth percentile with a fifty-two percent favorability and an even higher favorability, sixty-three percent in response to the question in school, how possible is it for you to change putting forth a lot of effort? And so this was a really nice sort of coupling of data points we saw here between these two questions that teachers are encouraging persistence with students and students also feel and are reflecting back. And especially at the middle grades, this is a huge success, right? That it is possible for them to try harder when they're encouraged and the conditions for success are present. For high school, a couple of glows that we noticed were again in this topic area of readiness for learning. This was the highest favorability at the high school at fifty-four percent. And there was pretty wide variance between seventy-five and thirty percent across individual questions in this topic, but wanted to pull out that the most favorable responses were about building friendships with peers at seventy-five percent. Students are not worried about COVID. That had a thirty-nine, excuse me, seventy-three percent favorability. And getting into their school-based routines was at a seventy-one percent favorability. This topic again has a lot of COVID-specific and sort of return to learning specific questions. But the questions around getting into routines and building friendships with peers, we consider pretty sort of pandemic neutral, that those are things that kids are getting ready for every school year regardless. And then also at the high school, under the topic of teacher-student relationships, the overall favorability for this topic was thirty-five percent. However, we saw a sixty-two percent favorability in this topic in response to the question, how many of your teachers are respectful towards you? And so again, just an indication that it's important when we're looking at some of this survey feedback and data that we dig into the details of topics so that we can see where those celebratory areas are in individual questions as well. So I'm not seeing any questions in the chat. Let me double check. Nope. Nor in our survey. I'll repeat that link again, and we can share any of these slides that are helpful. A few things.
Sorry, I have a question. What kind of responses did you get to the open-ended questions, like for families, it was like name three things that the school's doing really well type questions?
That's a great question. So we have committed to the district to do some additional data analysis on the qualitative data that's available. There were hundreds upon hundreds of individual responses that we're still spending some time analyzing. It's a little bit harder to glean trends from the anecdotal responses. So that's one thing that we're looking at is where we can hone in on identifying some of those key points. And we'll include that information as a follow-up to the district. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Make sure I'm not missing any other hands. Okay, so I'm going to voice over some of our next steps in the partnership and also things that we've discussed with the district. And then Superintendent, I will turn it over to you if there's any additional context you wanted to add here. But some things that we've discussed is that individual schools, so at each campus, school leaders will continue to review the data with district support. So looking really into some of that qualitative data, like Kristin, you just asked about what are our families saying at our school site specifically? Or what are our students saying at our school site specifically? We're encouraging folks to identify those areas of celebration and really leaning into what are the practices that are working well to receive favorable responses and how can we do more of that? As well as identify goals and areas for improvement or areas of opportunity and creating specific SMART goals around what are the indicators that we know we'd like to continue to support, both for our students as well as for our teachers, staff, and families. We're also going to be continuing conversations with district leadership about creating a streamlined survey experience moving forward. So we'll continue to analyze the data that you have available to you, thinking about how to identify those priority topics, looking at district-wide strategic initiatives or goals that you already have that might be aligned to some topics and really honing in and narrowing down the quantity of questions that students, teachers, staff, and families are responding to. And then we'll run another survey and partnership in the winter of twenty twenty-five, so next school year, to be able to monitor progress over time. Superintendent, I saw you come off of mute. Was there anything you wanted to add there? Oh, I don't think we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I know, Katie, we talked about the data review with the individual schools. Just most recently, we had a two-day collaborative NEAS visit. And one of the things that they're asking the high school to do is to develop a school-specific improvement plan. And so I think the, you know, for that NEAS team, using the data and really delving into it to develop their own school-based school improvement team. But we're going to ask each school to actually do that data analysis with you and then try to pull out those areas, obviously, to celebrate, but more specifically the the areas for improvement. And then really taking a look at the responses we got from the survey and try to streamline streamline and shorten the survey up.
Thank you. That brings our presentation of the data to a close. I'm available for any questions that folks have. Or again, please feel free to save this link as you're reflecting on some of the data over the next few days. If you'd like to submit additional questions, we'll put together a Q and A and then that qualitative data analysis for the district as well.
Do any board members have any additional questions at this point for Katie Avery?
I I just have one one kind of quick question. It's a couple of times you had mentioned that three through six were lumped and, I'm sorry, three through five were lumped and then six through twelve. Even though our middle school is five through eight. So I just didn't know if if those were lumped because that's how it best aligns with your national averages? Or or was there another reason why the middle school isn't truly the middle school grades?
That's a great question. So when we are looking at the aggregate data analysis, it will combine per those grade levels in order to measure, like you said, to the national data set. When you look at individual schools, so I could toggle, for example, to the elementary school, it'll show me the data for just those grades of the students rostered to that school.
Okay, thank you.
I see a hand raised from Jess Bolt.
Are we going to have access to like the raw data at all, Melinda?
We we didn't plan on giving out the raw data because not for any other reason, it's just that there's so much of it. I hadn't planned on doing that. That's really to you, I I think that you need to give the school-based teams time to delve into that data, come up with their goals for improvement before, you know, we we kind of delve into that that way.
Because it would be nice to see if we're kind of where maybe some, you know, maybe we could be driving some of those goals and changes that need to occur. If we're looking at the bigger picture with more data.
Well, I'm assuming that when the the schools put their improvement plans together, they're going to have to use that data and share that data with the board.
Right.
So yet they have to have the backup from the survey. That was the point.
I have an observation. I mean, I'm I the feedback that I was getting is that the surveys, especially those with multiple kids and multiple schools, it was just too long. And and I know we've addressed that and you have addressed that. So hopefully next year we get larger participation. We we had a decent participation in our elementary school. And as you say, it's typical, and you're telling me that it's typical to see that participation level drop off as you reach the the higher grade levels into the high school. And I can understand that. So is there a way that we as a board can help build that participation level? Like get out the vote type drive, because the more participation we have, the more accurate. We're going to get the complainers, they're going to they'll probably take the survey because they want to complain. And then may in the lower grades, you're going to get that participation. But I'd like to see the middle and the high school participate also, other than those who want to complain about the the teachers, the staff, or that they're 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 upset with some, a lot of it is driven by, I don't want to pay taxes, so I'm going to complain about the school. That I think that's where you saw the lower income with the with with the more with the bright orange. Possibly that causal effect there. I don't know. That could be the case.
Yeah, I think the good news here is that we have a really long runway between now and the next survey administration. And so we can have some really thoughtful and strategic planning conversations about how to hone in on those priority areas and the topics for which both the board and the district leadership would like to have additional feedback and really hone in for measuring growth over time. We have some best practices and some guidance from our research team around how to streamline the survey-taking experience. And then we do have, I think you may have seen me smile when you said a get out the vote campaign. We do have, especially when it comes to family survey administration, some of our strongest response rates come from districts who pick a day, right? And they say across campuses, this is our family survey day. And they have QR codes at the school, you know, at the pickup line. And they have flyers going out on buses and in backpacks. And they have notices in the hallway and they just increase visibility and communicate direct to communication and make sure that all folks across all campuses are invested in getting that kind of feedback from families. So I think we can certainly partner together to do both of those things. Make sure that we have a streamlined survey-taking experience and also that we're supporting Thompson schools in sort of getting the word out and making sure we have an increased response rate.
Thank you. Preston, you have your hand up still or?
Yes. Are we going to at least get this presentation? Because the data, it just moves really quickly. And I'm kind of with Jess that I would like to see the data. And it was hard to follow so quickly through every slide percentages.
It is a lot, yes. And I noticed that this meeting is being recorded, so I'm sure that'll be available. And then I would turn to the district leadership about sharing the PowerPoint.
Yeah, we're going to put the power, obviously tomorrow, send the PowerPoint to the board, but also put it on the website.
Okay, thank you.
Bill, you're unmuted. Do you want to say something? Okay, then Heather.
I just had one other question. When I did the parent survey, I had done it all in one sitting. But I had heard people having gripes about having it either timeout. Like they didn't have time to do the entire survey in one sitting and it had timed out. And then none of their data was saved. They had to do it over again. And that happened a couple of times. Now, is there a way, and again, because I had done it all in one sitting, I didn't really look for a save option. Is there a way to do it in bite-sized increments? Especially if it still ends up being lengthy enough that parents might not be able to get through it in one sitting?
I really appreciate that question and thank you for sharing your firsthand account of survey-taking. It is a privacy feature in part that it will timeout and not save your data. And so I think one tool that we have available to us as we look at survey redesign and honing in on fewer topics is that we at Panorama have a tool where we can input, let's say you decide on two to four family topics moving forward as opposed to the, I think it was nine plus that we have currently. Our tool will estimate how long it will take families to complete the survey and how many questions total are in the survey. And then we can turn that around into your outreach and communication materials and saying, please make sure you reserve twelve minutes of concentrated time to complete the survey so that folks are aware that it will log them out and that they can set aside that portion of time.
Okay. I also have one kind of just comment or question, I guess. You had mentioned a couple of times that when we were looking at the national averages, the percentile, that these were national averages and that, you know, those may change if the selection set was more rural and lower income, you know, kind of demographics. And I'm just, I definitely think it's important to, maybe it's nice to see, maybe to have it be more comparative. But I definitely want to maintain that national average because I don't want us to keep the bar low. You know what I'm saying? I want us to keep it high. So if the national average puts us in the lower percentile, I'd rather know that than have it be against other rural, lower-income communities and have it look like we're eighty percentile, you know?
Thanks for that. And that level of analysis will be included in those site-based consultations. So we'll guide individual school leaders through that exploration as well.
Any other questions or comments? From any of the participants, zoomers here? Well, I thank you for your presentation, Katie.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Definitely.
Okay, and look, yes.
And Katie, Michelle will be connecting with you so that we can set up those consult times with each of the principals.
Wonderful. Thank you.
The high school might be on the entail of that, although the NEAS team might very much want to meet with you.
Okay, I look forward to that. Thank you all for your time and for having me partner with the district. And I look forward to our next steps.
Okay, thank you. All right. So our next step is that we will, that the the principals and anybody else involved and the staff leaders, admin will look at these, pull out their priorities, give us a plan of moving forward with this. Because some of the results were disappointing, to say the least.
They were. Yes, they were.
But I guess we kind of expected that. There are two reasons people take polls, one to praise and one to complain. And, you know, I think some of that at the high school was a reason to complain. And I'll chalk it up to that.
And and not, and so we, I really want to work with Katie to dig deeper into the the data behind that and what kinds of questions prompted those results, right? So that we can actually work on whatever those issues are that parents have brought forward in regards to that particular school. You know, it is, you know, we've got a NEAS report that when you see it, it doesn't reflect necessarily the survey. And so we're going to take two bits of data and merge them together to put that that improvement plan together.
I agree. Well, we didn't get a huge, from the from the middle school slash high school, we did not get that of participation level that was that meaningful. From from the elementary school, we got a decent participation level, so.
Yeah, and that's the same trend, whether we do a survey ourselves or we send it out. Every time we do a survey, the breakdown is basically that. But, you know, you know, look, working with Katie, maybe getting some more ideas around boosting participation, especially that idea around, you know, this is survey day, you know, might be. And streamlining the survey and if parents know how long it's going to take to do the survey, then we might get a better response.
Yeah, well, let's hope. I don't know. I know it's an extra fee for them to, or we can somehow break down the data. I mean, Heather, I like the idea of, yes, we have to
beliefs.
Compare ourselves against.
Somebody needed to mute.
Oh, against the national data. But can we also compare ourselves against the rural schools, towns similar to our population?
Yeah, I think she can pull that out for us, actually.
Yeah, because there may be a whole different, you know, whole different results, different results on that percentile.
Yeah, and with our license with Panorama, we got so, Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong. We got so many hours of professional development with them. So I don't know how much we've utilized so far. But hopefully, the next level of data dive is still within our contract with them.
I believe it will be. We do have so many hours and we've used very little so far.
Okay, good. That would be an interesting set of information to have.
Okay.
How do we compare to towns like us? And maybe just limit it to the northeast. I mean, we don't have much in common with southern towns. I don't know, maybe just, you know, bounce that around. Or distant seaboard, I don't know. Think about it. I don't know. But do we have in common with the south, the Midwest, and California? Maybe we do, who knows?
I like, yeah, I like I like Heather's comment, though, because we always want to measure ourselves up against, well, what is the national norm, right?
Oh, no, I'm not saying not to do that. We should have that, definitely. We already do. We should have that. But we should also possibly narrow it down, like we do with our Derg and our regional, you know, our budding towns.
Correct. Yeah, I will ask her when I meet with her next.
Okay, all right. Other than that, does anybody have any other comments? You know, comments, questions, or I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Nobody wants to adjourn?
I'll make the motion, Kathleen.
Matt is the most, we can second, okay. All right. Matt's been having fun this week.